All right, before we begin, I want us all to stand and take hats off if you have them on to salute the flag, please. Flag at the back of the room. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Ed is not here tonight, so I am chair for the evening, acting chair. Call to order this meeting of the Nottingham Planning Board for Wednesday, May 8th. We are in conference room one. Before we begin with the agenda, I will have us go around the room and introduce yourselves, please.
Robert Davies, Altona.
Skip Severance.
John Warren. Sorry, skip over you there.
Wow. Chris Evans.
Just a roll here.
Teresa Bascom.
Drew Stevens.
Doug Cummings, member.
Larry Haney, SRPC.
Okay, and because Ed is not here, we will have buzz seated and voting tonight to give us a full board, okay? All right, the first order of business is case number 24001, a lot line adjustment, and 24002 sub. This is an application from Joseph Falzone on behalf of the Forgotten Mountain Realty Trust requesting approval for a 16 lot open space subdivision off Raymond Road in Nottingham. The properties are identified as tax map number 69 and lots 17 and 18. If the applicant and his representatives would come forward, please. We did receive new maps on Friday. Hopefully, everybody was able to pick them up ahead of time to look at them a little bit.
We also had them emailed to us.
Yep, you're okay with looking at maps, Altona? I'm so glad for you.
Are you referring to the updated plan?
Yes, this way. If you would, please, give us an update from the last meeting we had with you guys, which I wasn't here for, but it really was the end of March.
Yep.
And let us know where things stand, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Scott Colvin, Beal Associates. I think you know the developer, Joseph Falzone. Behind me, also have attorney Tim Phoenix. To update the board, we've been pretty busy since our last meeting. I'll start with plans. Plan-wise, we have resubmitted updated plans. Really, the only necessary major items on that had to do with our previous plan board meeting, and that was in the discussion of the side slopes. We went in-depth on the pros and cons of the two-to-one side slopes and the storage areas and so forth. It was the consensus that maybe the two-to-one slopes may not be appropriate for this job. At least, that's the feeling we got. So, we have redesigned the entire job to three-to-one slopes as the town regulations apply. So, we would like to retract our previous waiver requests for the two-to-one as it is not necessary. Other than that, the plans relatively remain the same. Of course, the cross-sections and the profiles have changed to reflect that grading. We also have made two submittals. We went to the River Advisory Committee and sent them a full application of the materials as well as New Hampshire DES AOT Division. We have submitted to them. I believe they have gave it a file number, but have not actually reviewed that at this time, so we await their comments. We also had a pretty detailed meeting with the Conservation Commission on this Monday night. We went over quite a few different aspects of the subdivision. I believe they have actually issued a letter to that effect with multiple bullet points on that, which we can discuss. I think Joe maybe may have a couple of comments on that as well. Other than that, we are waiting for basically receipt of review comments. At this point now, will be from New Hampshire DES, New Hampshire Fishing Game, who has been contacted by Brendan Quigley of GES. He's the, if you remember, he's the gentleman at the wetlands and the inventory study of the property. So, they have been aware of the job, they've made contact, and we await their formal review comments. Other than that, I will entertain any questions.
I have a question, if I may.
Yes, sir.
The place where we're talking about it's going to rise up 16 feet, and you're going to do three-to-one now instead of two-to-one, right? 16 feet, so that's a bank going up 16 feet. There going to be guardrails there?
There is. The guardrail is actually warranted in either situation, three-to-one or two-to-one because of the height, so that really didn't make any difference.
Because of the height?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so the guardrail was proposed and still is.
Guardrails, while we are on the subject. Lot 3, 4.
What page are you on, on the maps?
Pardon me?
What page are you looking at?
616. On the plan, seemed to indicate, you know, over the first 100 feet, like a 30-foot drop, and maybe, Scott, I have to apologize, I'm not an engineer. I don't have the letters after my name like you do. I know you've spent many years with this, so my apologies for not being very articulate about what I'm trying to say here. It appears that there's a great deal of slope right off the road on lots 3 and 4, and is a guardrail warranted there? They seem to slope straight down from there, 30 feet from the road towards where the septic area is. And the driveways may have some slopes too, which exceed what I saw on the regulations as 8% in our town regulations. What can you, oh, and on driveways too, while you're entering that conversation, the driveway regs seem to have this negative slope requirement on the uphill side where the water doesn't run down into the road. I can't discern whether there is a negative slope off the road on the uphill side of the driveway. So, if you can talk about the guardrails there, maybe, and the driveways, that would be great.
Yep, so on lots 3 and 4, if you look at the proposed contours, actually, on those two lots, they pretty much blend right into existing grade rather quickly, so that's why guardrail would not be warranted. We fully think that those lots will be, the house will be up front, and then the septic, and then there'll be walkouts. So, you can certainly recapture some of the grade and build the house into the grade versus filling the whole lot. You know, especially with the maximum requirement of 8% for the driveways, you can only go so much anyways, so. But the way you determine if slope was warranted is the proposed, how the vertical difference in elevation meets from proposed grade to existing grade. For a three-to-one slope, anything over 10 feet, guardrail will be warranted, which would be five contours. These are almost blending right into existing grade rather quickly, so that's why guardrail isn't warranted there. For the driveways, yeah, it's pretty typical. We have to deal with the same thing in Barrington. They require a short negative pitch before going up to a driveway, which is fine. Even on a descending driveway, what they'll usually do is just put a little six-inch hump, so it goes down, up, and then down. And all it does is, like you said, it stops any of the drainage in both directions, from either going from the road to the houses or the houses to the road, so.
Culverts underneath that, too?
Excuse me?
Are there culverts underneath that?
Well, this one here is actually, so the curbing will be integral with the road because it's Cape Cod.
Yep.
So, what they'll do is they'll simply, for the driveways, they'll just have a shorter curb, so you have that lip, and the rainwater can't get over anyways.
So, on 3, where the contours, there's 1, 2, 3, 4 contours, it looks like in the first 10 feet. That's more of a drop than 8%, I think.
On lots 3 and, are you on page 20?
I'm on page 16, looking at lot 3.
Page 16.
Sheet 16.
Oh.
Yeah, for proposed grades, you want to look at sheet 20. So, that shows you where the road elevation meets the existing elevation. So, we've seen on lots 3 and 4, the doctor proposed contours?
Sheet 20. Oh, okay, that's, I don't check.
So, really, that, the road in that section in front of lots 3 and 4 are almost at grade.
So, lot 2 has a grade to it, right?
It's got some, yeah, 2, 4, 6 at the deepest.
Yeah, but graded off to the sides. It's graded off to the sides, either down or up, I can't tell from this, but.
Yeah, for the driveway.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
I thought somewhere in the regs, it said something about a lot plan that showed the driveway, so that, you know, we might be able to see this rather than on a bazillion scale or whatever this happens to be, I don't know. Is there any subsequent plans coming in that show individual lot plans, driveways for these lots?
Well, the driveways are shown to the extent that they're designed right now. You usually can't go any further than that until you do a septic plan without knowing exactly where the house is going, far or back, or, you know. Usually, the requirement pertains to, you know, 10 or 20 feet past the right-of-way line, because past that, it's kind of an unknown.
Right, which I see the driveways are just, you know, stubbed on there.
Yep.
I think that's in the regulations, it says 10 or 12 feet onto lot, and then.
Yep, yep. Yep, so that's what we tried to display.
So, you're saying there is a negative pitch on the uphill side of that, on those driveways?
Well, it certainly will be. At this scale, it's kind of hard, but, you know, a septic plan will have.
That's what I'm saying, it's hard to see that.
Yeah. It's hard to display that, because, I mean, a six-inch, you won't see in a two-foot contour. Difference, I should say.
I got a clarification question on sheet 6. I think this was brought up by a previous board member, and I don't know if, I don't recall there being any answer given, but on page, sheet 6, excuse me, there's a note that says easement to control beaver dams, CRF Plan 1. What is that, what is that about?
I actually contacted the surveyor. Believe it, it's just a legal note that was put on a very old plan, and we actually don't know what it's for, because I don't even think there's a beaver dam there.
Okay.
I think it was for the right, if by natural occurrence one was built, whoever that plan references to had the ability to take it down.
Okay.
But again, I'm not positive of that. But I did confer with the licensed land surveyor, and he said it was very vague, but he wanted to note it because it was found on another survey plan.
Okay, makes sense. Also, the, there's supposed to be a vernal pool assessment done. We haven't seen that. What's the status of the vernal pool assessment?
Yep, that was done. We went into quite the review on that at Monday night's Concom hearing with Brendan Quigley.
Okay.
There's a number of pools that are found. I do know that they're all in the open space. We went into, Brendan went into quite detail on that. I didn't do the study, so.
We haven't received that updated study either.
I know the Concom did, I thought you did as well.
Has anybody received the updated environmental impact assessment with vernal pool data?
I did a letter from the.
Yeah, that letter came out, was it today?
Today, we haven't had a chance to read it.
By email.
From the Concom?
Yeah.
No, not the, sorry, not the Concom's response letter, the updated environmental impact assessment from GOV Environmental that we were supposed to get.
Yeah, I know he did a vernal pool report, and he did note to the Conservation Commission, and again, excuse me if I, I don't do that work, so. There's data sheets for every vernal pool that he fills out, and he knows, he does need to send those to the Concom, because they weren't included, I guess, in the study.
Yeah, it's not referenced here either.
So, that's supposed to be done. But I know the, the vernal pool report is done, and we spoke of that Monday night, so we can double-check and make sure that if you don't have it, that we'll get it to you.
Yeah, we'd like to see that, I think. I'm also wondering, you know, we've talked about the culvert design for that section of road that's going to be raised up 16 feet, the one that was subject to the waiver that you now are retracting. Is that still proposed to be a couple of pipes, 12-inch and 18-inch?
At this time.
Okay. I would really like to see a culvert design that is more amenable to wildlife, especially the endangered species that are.
Yep, we actually went over that again in detail Monday night. Just so you understand, I tried to relay that to on Monday night. So, if you think of where the road crossing is now, the shape of it, is a very broad parabolic curve. Then you add a road, and you have the same amount of water, and especially with a, like, just for instance, we're going to put a box culvert. Now, you're channelizing that water to one point, which makes a large increase. That's not allowed by New Hampshire DES. So, that would actually require a waiver to their statutory regulations, which is not usual. So, that's why the way we did it is to, we are required to regulate the amount of water leaving the site to the amount it is. Tomorrow will be as it is yesterday. So, we have a small culvert to handle the smaller storms, like a two-year storm, then we stage it with a bigger culvert, so the higher storms also can go through that culvert when it overflows. But we ran, we did run some quick numbers on a, you know, a four, like a four-by-four box culvert, and it more or less blows up. So, it's, but we can, we're still going to obviously talk with New Hampshire Fishing Game and DES about that and go into more detail on that. But that's kind of the functioning that we're facing in that area.
Yeah, and I understand that, so, you know, what you're taking away as far as, you know, wildlife access to that area by building a road through it, especially something like the endangered species that exists on the site and around the site, you need to, you know, part of what our job is, is to make sure that the natural resources on the site are preserved and maintained. And so, I think in a case like this, it would warrant going through and trying to get an exception to that rule in order to make a culvert that would allow for wildlife passing. The way the road is designed now essentially creates an ecological trap, where any animal that comes around that side of the property encounters that road, and either has to cross that, that road and endanger itself, or go out to Route 156. And so, the problem is that the culverts don't allow any type of crossing outside of over roads to go through that area. And with these endangered species on the site, a single individual dying can spell doom for that entire local population. And that's why it is of critical importance that this site design actually accommodate the species that exist, not a general wildlife accommodation, but accommodation specific to this species that we know exist in proximity, and because of that, and knowing their natural history, exist on the site as well. And so, having, I have, actually, you'll be excited, as an engineer, UNH and New Hampshire Fishing Game on, in November of just last year, released a design guidance for wetland road crossings to reduce blanding's turtle mortality risk. And so, it's got a number of design guidances in there, like an openness ratio of .82 square feet per foot of opening, so that you have visibility for wildlife, so that they'll actually use that culvert to cross. These culverts also shouldn't be perched. They need to be set or embedded at grade, so that an animal doesn't have to try to go up into the culvert in order to access it. They shouldn't be any less than two feet wide. They shouldn't be covered by grates or screenings at the openings or within them. They should preferably use a natural substrate along the culvert to aid in wildlife movement, not something like riprap within the culvert itself. Although riprap, riprap should be used along the road slope to provide a break in the riparian continuity between kind of, you know, the lower land and the slope up to the road, so that the wildlife will use the culvert instead of trying to cross the riprap that leads up to the road. And because of that, I would also suggest going back to a two-to-one slope for that area, because.
You are one of the most advocate, loud and advocate people that didn't want the two-to-one.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you were, because you wanted to be, make sure that somebody could climb the three-to-one side slopes. So, we spent a lot of time and money revising these plans, and now you're saying you like the two-to-one better? I mean, that.
Scott, I, Scott, I, I brought up the two-to-one.
Yep.
And, and you guys jumped ahead, and it was regarding site distance from the driveways in particular, and slopes on.
And snow, and critters.
And it did not, actually, I liked the two-to-one in this particular location, because it had less impact to the wetland area. That made sense.
Yeah, I think you're confusing. I had no opposition to that. I had some questions about it, but we decided to move on.
There may have been, you, you may have brought up that there was a slope, you know, that would challenge the turtle crossing this road to get up over this slope.
My concern is that if the culvert was going to remain as it was, you know, just pipes, that a, a, a two-to-one would end up, you know, channeling these, because it's a, you know, steeper slope, that it would end up channeling the animals over to Route 156, which is even more dangerous. So, that's what I'm saying, a two-to-one, a two-to-one is appropriate when an appropriate culvert is also installed, okay? If that culvert weren't installed, then, yeah, a three-to-one, you know, maybe more appropriate. But to minimize the amount of culvert you'd have to make, a two-to-one makes more sense. I think you maybe totally took away a wrong impression from that last meeting. I did not have a, a strong opposition to that two-to-one, and I'm sorry if you took that away. Please do, yeah.
Okay, your exact words were that you would defer to what the culverts were. If there was a three-to-one slope, you said, the critters could crawl up it easier than a steep slope.
That's correct. We don't want critters crawling up the slope.
Right, so, I went back and spent $10,000, redesigned the whole project because of the comments that were brought up, and.
The comments that you misunderstood, apparently.
Well, then, both of us, who are professionals and do this, misunderstood. You made the comment that a box culvert might not be necessary if there was a three-to-one slope, because it allowed the critters to be able to climb up the side.
I don't think I ever would have said that a box culvert was not necessary.
We're not getting into being, we got two opinions here of what happens.
Were you here at that hearing?
I've been at all the meetings.
I don't know, I was not here at the last one, so I can't have any input on this.
I don't think there's any situation in which I would have said a box culvert is not necessary on the site plan. I may have said if, if a culvert is not put in, then a three-to-one is preferable over a two-to-one.
There was always two culverts. We were always making.
Yeah, no, it's the pipe culvert's the problem. It's a, it's a wildlife culvert that can actually let wildlife pass, that is the issue here. There needs to be something like that on the site.
Right, and we have gone to the Concom meeting.
Yep.
And they suggested that we enlarge the lower culvert where the animals can access it. Right now, it's 12 inches, and we talked about increasing that to six inches, 16 inches. I am not putting a box culvert in, so you know. You can advocate it for all you want. It's not required under the state regulations, and it's not required just because you want it.
Yeah, it's not required because I want it. It's required because we are, as a board, supposed to offer and require design changes that minimize the impact and reduce adverse impacts.
We've done that.
That, you have not done that adequately, not for the, not for the species that exist on this site.
We're going to comply with the state tells us to do.
And yet, we don't know what that is yet, right? Because you said your reading comments.
Correct. I got something in tonight, I haven't read it from the state right before I was coming here.
I didn't.
Briefly went by, read it.
That's part of, part of the review process is, you know, there's, and again, there's also two different agencies. You have your DES agency, which is water. And then you have your Fishing Game agency, which is critters. So, wildlife, I should say wildlife, sorry. So, they understand there's differences in the designs, and, you know, one may dictate a change versus the other. So, that's why there's, those agencies need to actually talk to each other, and then talk to us, and then we kind of come up with a result. So, and to really, we hear from both of those bodies, we really don't know what direction we need to go in.
And it would be the same for us as far as a decision goes, because we haven't seen the information yet, and just received the Conservation Commission's report, and have not, I have not had a chance to read it yet. We just got it today, so.
A letter, yeah.
And I'm going to add that we haven't received the engineer review of the new plan, and.
I have not either, so I don't know what's going on.
So, you know, and I don't feel qualified to engineer review your plan, sir, sorry. You have the letters after your name, I don't. So, we're relying on that. We're relying on Fishing Game. Fishing Game states, based on the New Hampshire Board for, that data check, that there are sightings of endangered species, and their comments were, "We are required by law to provide recommendations for projects prior to certain permit issuance." So, we are relying on their expertise. We're relying on the Conservation Commission's suggestions and expertise. They are calling for a, a third-party wetland expert to go in and assess the areas adjacent to the road, where this three-to-one, two-to-one culvert discussion is being had right this minute, so that we're not qualified to actually make a decision on that until we see feedback from all these different agencies. And it's, it looks like our duty, according to our regulations, to make findings that, you know, this complies with all the town regulations and state regulations, and I don't think we have sufficient information to do that today. Thank you for your patience. It takes a long time. I, I think we need to extend our meeting, is what we really need to do right now.
We were always going to extend the meeting, but we had to come back and update you.
Okay.
That's, that's not new news.
Oh, all right, well, don't you feel bad?
We're not here for, we're not here for an approval.
We aren't going to push for approval.
We're here to make progress.
Okay.
And I got a response to the Concom, if you're going to go over the Concom tonight.
Well, I have questions about it too, because I read it, so.
I haven't had a chance.
There's a lot of things in there that I've never seen before, ever.
I have not had a chance to go over.
You can't make loud, loud noise in your yacht.
I, you can't, I, again, there's a lot of things in there I read, but if we're, when we get there, I'll be happy to discuss that as an open public, just a one-on-one, but.
We, we received it before in our packet.
So, we just received it today.
Oh, your comments.
Shouldn't we have time to actually look it over?
No.
We shouldn't have time to look at it?
I just read it.
He just, he just read it now, but.
There's only, I only have four comments, so the rest is, I'm fine with that.
You're skipping me for what reason?
You already have it. It's in your folder.
No, he said these are his comments.
It's, it's, it's the, all their content, and in blue are my three and four comments.
Why, why did you skip me?
Because I like you more than anyone.
Yeah, I know. I know, right?
We do want to go, go all this.
All right, and I, and I know that you do, and, but I would really like to give the Conservation Commission a chance to talk about their report before we hear your comments back, okay?
Yeah, I agree, I understand.
All right, does anybody have anything else for Mr. Falzone, or?
Yeah, I do. I'd just like to read to you our subdivision regulations, Part 14.1, Section 3. Lots shall contain contiguous areas of developable, developable land, such that the driveway, building, water supply, and sewage disposal, and other improvements can be constructed without filling of wetlands, or other such adverse impacts that could be eliminated by different subdivision design. The number of lots may be reduced by the board to reduce adverse impacts. The board shall have the authority to require design changes to minimize impacts regardless of the actions of other local or state permitting actions, such as the issuance of a permit to fill wetlands for a driveway crossing. So, I thought you should know that, when you're saying that we don't have the authority to require you to make some site changes.
Remember, and remember, it's, as you've been here before, it's a vote of the whole entire board, not one person's opinion on the board. I can have my own opinion on the 3-1, 2-1.
Right.
I like the 3-1.
Right.
Thank you for doing it.
Yep.
All right, I've seen your developments before. You're increasing the stuff what you said in here. Again, we can talk more about it, but thank you for what you've presented us already.
Thank you.
I have a question before we move on, and it's got nothing to do with any of the critters or.
critters or the three to one. And forgive me if this is, this has been asked before. But when you, when you take these houses to market, what do you think it might be the average price?
Well, it all goes by square footage.
Yep.
If it's senior citizens buying a house, most of them now want one level and will be a smaller 15 to 1600 square foot house. And that might be five or $600,000. And you might come, some, someone comes along that has climbed the ladder and they got four or five kids and they want to build a house for eight and $900,000. And if they want to pay for it, we'll sell it to them. But that's what the market, that's how the market will drive it.
Okay.
But a lot of people are going one story, the older people.
Okay. And that makes sense. You know, I'm, personally, I'm looking for, to help with a shortage we have in, in New Hampshire of affordable housing. 500 to 800, I don't consider that affordable. It's just my opinion.
Okay. But right now, I know because I finished a couple of affordable projects. It was at like 450. That was set by the state. In each January or February, based upon market conditions, they reset what the affordable price is. And that gets applied when we're in towns, and I don't think your town has this regulation. But some towns will require that you have to have 20% affordable housing. 20% of the housing becomes actually non-profitable and you make it up on the other 80%. And then they take in the 20% and lock it in for 30 or 40 or 50 years. And that's how they create their affordability. Now, I don't know if you have that regulation or not.
So you're saying the state sets the number for what's affordable?
Right.
And here in Nottingham, what's the median price for a home?
If you looked on today.
Yeah.
You ain't getting a house in Nottingham for around $600,000.
The average price across the state is over 500,000 right now. And, and to build something affordable, you really truly need subsidies from the government. It's, it's hard to achieve. And, you know, we, we would put this burden on a developer and they, they can't do it. It's, it's the lot prices, the development prices. Mr. Falzone, he just spent $10,000 extra dollars to redraft the plan. It, it just costs a lot to go through the whole process. So it is a problem and it's, how, how is it going to get solved is, is something that we should all try to envision here as the planning, driving this big planning board bus. But it's, it's a statewide problem.
And I, I guess I have to wrap my head around the idea that 450 is affordable. No, to me, I think I bought mine for 90, just a few years ago. 30, 30, 32 years. So I'm sorry. Thank you for the information.
All right. Does anybody have anything else?
I'm really concerned about the open space area being part of an HOA. Has, has, have you guys gone towards other avenues? I haven't seen it in any of the documentation.
Yeah, when we, when we met with the Conservation Commission two nights ago, one of the topics discussed was could we deed it to the town?
Yeah.
So the town would have.
I don't like that idea either. But anyway, go ahead.
They, they said that, they said that, and maybe one of the members could speak, that the statute doesn't allow you to do that, that the fee has to be held by the homeowners' association. But you can put an easement layer or restriction on it. And I think that's the direction we're heading in.
And the ConCon report talks about enforcement of the HOA and that, and that open space.
Enforcement by HOA or by the town ain't going to happen. You need somebody that's into that, like a Selt.
I think the recommendation was a third party?
Yeah. Our, our recommendation was an annual inspection. That's what we, we did in the town of Rye.
Yeah.
A lot of money there too. You know, they, they just wanted everything.
I, I think Revolutionary has that thing, that kind of a thing with the medallions and all that kind of stuff.
So, yeah, we have to do the medallions. We submitted the Fish and Game medallions to your Conservation Commission. And the way they did it is they built into the HOA that the HOA pays a licensed engineer, a person that inspects environmental lines. And once a year, they have to do a report that the site was walked and no one's dumping clippings, no one's throwing their furniture out there.
Right.
No one's cutting trees. No one's dumping automobiles. And this happens. And they're going to retain enforcement power. If the HOA doesn't enforce it, the town can enforce it and they can put a lien for the illegal fees and everything. And the person can't sell their house. So you know you're going to get paid. It's just when.
Somehow, yeah. It concerns me. That's all. I, I understand the, the flow. It's just, there's a lot of stop signs, it seems like to me, can come up that would stop that flow. But it wouldn't necessarily happen with a third party like a Selt. I mean, I don't know. A land trust that would cover it. I was just wondering if you guys were looking into that at all.
Yeah, you mean an inspector?
No. Somebody that would own that parcel as a, as a conservation parcel.
Not to date. And that's what we have. And I know, or I hear that some of these agencies like GIAPOS and them.
Yeah.
They have way too much to handle now.
Yeah. That's also very true. But that's their job. I don't.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else?
I'm glad you brought that up. I, I meant to add to my list of other things that we need to rely on. According to the regulations, it looks like we need legal review on the HOA documents before we issue any sort of finals. So I don't know if that's been put in motion or worked on or it's just developing right now.
We haven't got there yet.
Yeah, because we're going to have to put some of the Fish and Game language.
Yes, yes, yes.
So we're not to the point where it's going to go to town council. But normally there's a condition of the approval that you can't do anything until town council signs off the review.
Okay. I, I, I read that we can't give a final approval until we get that review. But I may be wrong about what.
You're right.
Final is correct.
Final, yeah, final. There's a difference between final and conditional.
While we're on the HOA, I do have a couple of points that I, my, my personal perspectives, but they, perhaps other people on the board shares these. In our regs, you know, it talks about providing appropriate wildlife quarters. It talks about trails. And there are existing trails and there was a comment by somebody, maybe it was a ConCon. I, I read through the entire file, hundreds of pages and plans today and yesterday. And so my brain doesn't walk everything down here. It's not all in here. So the, the quick dumb question is, are you doing anything with trails there so that, you know, there's an actual access to some of these areas? And, and parking. I'm seeing this hill going up that's pretty steep. We had it subdivision a long time ago and where there was a steep hill going up. And when it got icy and bad, people parked their cars at the bottom of the hill and walked up to their houses. You have a 10% grade there. I think it was a 10% grade too.
We, to answer your question, we meet the grade. So we comply with the grade.
So what, the, the question was, would you consider maybe a couple of parking spaces in that open space area?
They don't want parking spaces. You, you just said you want to, no, they don't can, they've never told me that I can put parking spaces.
They?
The town. I've done 400 houses here.
Okay.
All right. They, no, they don't want parking spaces.
We would not recommend parking spaces.
Yeah, I know.
No? Okay. That's, that's why I say, maybe just my opinion. I just throwing that out there on the table.
It's more impervious surface that we had to put down for pavement for the parking spaces. It's more infrastructure. It's just, the town would not, in my opinion, would not be, anyway.
We'd have to have three meetings on who's going to plow it.
Three? Boy, that'd be a nice.
This is a private road. They're going to be plowing it.
I know, I know. See, we've already got there.
Public road.
It's not a private road.
That's if it gets approved. But we, we'll fair to talk about.
Chris, to answer the, the first half of your question, the open space access between Lot 11 and 12, there's an existing tote road there. See, that's in the open space. So all the residents there can certainly, if they want to, they can access the open space there. So there is, and that leads to all the other trails. The trails are there and usable.
I cut two, two miles of trails in there besides all the trails that are there.
Yeah. Yeah, I noticed this. We stumbled onto your lot the other day. Sorry if I was trespassing. No, it's not your lot yet. The, we stumbled on, they were coming down from the, and found a beautiful, beautiful spot. Really, it's a beautiful lot and that, you know, the people to see, you know, the, the wetland area and the, the whole is, is really quite nice. And, you know, the wildlife there. So just access for appreciation. The other thing on that was, when I look at this, I say, you know, here's this section where you're raising up the road and it's 22 feet wide. And there's guardrails literally like on the sides of the road. So somebody.
They're not, they're not on the sides of the road.
How far in are they?
Read the plan. They have shoulders.
How, two feet?
Asked the question at the last time. We explained it. We got to put shoulders beyond that.
Well, actually for the guardrails.
How far are the guardrails past the curbs? Where's the snow?
Past the face of curb and that's from a detail provided by your town's engineer. So the whole question with the side slopes came from, well, was related to your town engineer who replied, which should be in your records, the opinion of their engineer was, they didn't prefer the two to one. They thought it would be more hazardous for erosion controls.
Yep.
So based on that and other commentary, we revised it all to three to one, which led us to revisions on the guardrail for the termination of the guardrail, et cetera, and the spacing because the crossaxes needed to be revised. So they sent us actually a, a state guardrail detail which showed the guardrail in the face where it's supposed to be. So we revised it to meet their detail. So that's per your town's engineer. So the face of the curb will, the face of the guardrail would be right at the backside of the curb.
So if I'm walking my dog up this road and someone's coming down the road, I have no place to go. You have guardrails on both sides. It just reminds me of a bowling alley where they put the, the rails up on the side where the kid throws the ball down and they can't go off.
So I'm sort of, before you, before you even go off on that things.
Yes.
Most of these roads here, if somebody's walking their dog, I mean, let's not throw the worst hypothetical situations out on this.
Okay.
About this because most times if a person's going to walk the road, it's going to be one car coming. I mean, you're talking about 99.9% of the time. And just because there's guardrails there, they're there for safety so people don't roll their car over. So, I mean, the, the purpose of them there meets way more benefit than the purpose of a person walking their dog on the road for that one particular instant. So thank you for having guardrails on both sides for safety.
And there, there would be a two-car lane anyway, isn't it?
It's going to be 25 feet, 30 feet wide, so.
So you'd, you'd have space to go with your dog. You have anything else, Chris?
As I said, I, I was, it was a question and a kind of an observation and a question more than anything.
Anything else before I open it up for public comment?
Nope. I think we.
Skip.
On page, on page 16, I asked this last time. You showed me the note for the, the, oh, the sprinkling of the homes.
Hmm?
It, it's, that, that seems too far into the document. Seems like it should be a page one kind of thing. But I'm just wondering if that would be the normal place that somebody in town would look to find that. It is a signed page, so it is part of the plan.
But don't forget, you can't get a building permit without the fire department signing off and inspecting, just so you know. Because we have to meet the, the state's regulation.
Yeah.
So you don't get a building permit. So everyone's going to know they got sprinklers because you got to get a sign off certificate.
Okay.
And the fire department has to inspect it.
I hear you. I just think the note's too far in.
I'll put it on every page if you want.
No. There is a lot of other information that's here, but it doesn't seem to be necessarily related to the building permit. I didn't know if there was a better page for building permit information or whatever. I don't know. It's here, so, and it's a signed page, so it's going to get, well, these recorded.
This one in the following plan, these here are the plans that show in detail the septic and well. So being utilities, that's where we put the fire suppression note. It's kind of a utility, so.
All right. That's fine.
We can put it on the boundary plan, but it kind of, nobody would expect it there.
Yeah. That was, that was the key right there. The boundary plan, yeah, you don't need it there. But this is the.
All right. Anything else? No?
Did you want to hear from the Conservation Commission before we go to?
That's what I'm going to do. Thank you very much.
I thought you were going to public comment. Sorry.
Well, they are, they are part of the public comment. If you wouldn't mind vacating the table for a few minutes, I'm going to ask the Conservation Commission, folks to come up, please, whoever your rep is, to give a little summary of your meeting with them. Are you guys prepared to do that?
Hi, folks.
Are you, are you guys prepared, prepared for someone to come up and give a little summary of your meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Please state your name and, did you, from Conservation Commission, please?
Cheryl Smith, Conservation Commission Vice Chair.
Dallas Huggins, Conservation Commission member.
Okay.
Okay. So we met with the applicant Monday night, had a good conversation. And just to follow up on a couple of questions that came up, they did present all of the information from the vernal pool assessment. It was very thorough. But we didn't have a copy of that yet either. So that, I mean, that was just recently done, recently compiled. And they were planning to get the vernal pool report to us and I'm assuming a copy to the planning board as well. So that vernal pool assessment was very thorough, including counts of salamander egg masses and frog egg masses and how deep those vernal pools were, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
So that, that was very thorough on that. Then there was another question about something that the, you didn't get a report on yet.
The updated environmental assessment.
Yeah. So that, that vernal pool assessment will be amended to the environmental assessment. So that will be updated. Okay. So you should have that and we'll have a copy of that as well. So we went over a number, a number of points, basically to touch on the, the culverts that were, were discussed. The way that was explained to us is that the box culverts could potentially increase the rate of flow going through that. So in an area of trying to compromise with, with what would move through there, having a larger culvert at the bottom, the applicants all does, also discussed rather than using plastic, which is sort of the norm for culverts now, to go with cement, which is tactily, tactilely, however you say that word, more acceptable for critters, so to speak, or particularly amphibians or turtles to move through as opposed to plastic. We talked about the possibility of, instead of using a very sharp-sighted riprap anywhere in that area of the culvert to, and the applicants actually said that they had looked and possibly specked out what's called river stone. So it's a little bit smoother, would be easier, not as large as some of the riprap that's typically used along some, some culvert areas that not just amphibians have trouble with, but even larger animals and wildlife can get their feet stuck into and et cetera, and less likely to happen with river stone. So, so the applicant did look at that as well. We also mentioned that the Natural Heritage Bureau report expired or will expire in the middle of next month. But the applicant, his group, his environmental specialist explained that that was, because of the whole process with Fish and Game, if Fish and Games feels that they need to have an updated NHB report, they will request it and then that goes into Fish and Games' report. So instead of having them do that, it would get another file number if we asked for a new report at this time, which would complicate Fish and Games reviewing the file.
Yeah.
Which made perfect sense to us. Uh, let's see. Oh, there was, I read through much of the materials today too, and looking at the engineers' comments and then comments back from applicant and engineer's report, the Cape Cod curbing that's there is much more desirable, at least from a wildlife and amphibian standpoint, than the granite curbs that are more specified in our town regs. Those are square, steep-sided, hard, and these Cape Cod burns that they have and that they're put into this. Those are square, steep-sided, hard, and these Cape Cod burns that they have and that they're put into this design is more rounded and much more easily, um, trans, traversed or traversed by wildlife and amphibians. So a plus there. We had made a number of other suggestions, which have been in, in other areas as well. Low salt area for this because of the drainage into sort of critical areas and wetlands and, and with their catch basins, et cetera, and that can be posted and then the town can appropriately use low salt in that area. Uh, what else did we touch on? Uh, we did suggest, and the applicant agreed, um, the lower culvert, uh, to be increased, the upper culvert not to be increased, but the lower culvert to be increased as can. But in your discussion with the applicant, um, they're gonna look into that more and see what they can do. They're, they're very willing to try and work on that, but did explain that the box culvert is just, um, doesn't seem to be appropriate in this case because of the way the water flow would potentially go in that situation. But I think that's an ongoing thing that they'll be looking at.
Can I make one comment?
Yep.
Um, just that New Hampshire Fish and Game will likely provide some guidance on that. They actually just completed a guidance document all about culverts, so, um, there's a lot of updated things on, on wildlife-friendly passage and so on.
Okay, good.
You're still waiting for that report, correct? You haven't heard from?
Yes, we have not heard.
Fish and Game.
And, and the applicant will hear from Fish and Game. We won't hear from Fish and Game, but the applicant agreed to share their, it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's more than by, by email and stuff like that, the reports, and it's kind of a back and forth with Fish and Game?
And actually, the, the email came in.
Okay, so, and then they would share that, share that with us and of course with the board as well in terms of what, what they had.
I was gonna ask, how long does that take, but Mr. Falcone, you said you got that already?
Yeah, I haven't read the whole.
Okay.
And the town will get a copy of it too, it's public, public information.
And what, what was indicated was that thirty days after that process is started is usually the expectation to have that come through. And the applicants went in the week after the 10th of April, I guess? So the timing seems appropriate within that. To touch on this HOA, um, so we've had a number of discussions. Dallas and I both talked with Joe independently, a phone conversation about a month ago. We've, you brought up Highlands and that is an area that, that has a, they're not conservation easements. They're, they are deed restricted areas. And so by that, the Conservation Commission has had to do the assessments on that year after year after year. And with a limited number of people, a limited number of resources, that has come, become impossible for us to do in a timely manner. So that was why the request was done to the Board of Selectmen, to have this done by some other agency. And then Joe explained that, that there's a couple, another scenario that, that works out for this. Most of the, the land conservation groups, you know, as, as you mentioned, bear paw, et cetera, self-spinif, they're not taking on something that's this, even though it seems like a large open space and it's a large acreage, they're not taking on these kind of projects. So it seems to be a workable thing that happened in Rye where they can, they can have a, a third party. So when we say a third party, it doesn't have to be an engineer, it can be a licensed wildlife specialist. We mentioned a couple, um, in our recommendations that work in our area that the Conservation Commission and others in this area have worked with as well, so.
Yeah, this open space does have some drainage receptacles.
Correct.
And that would be, I think, more engineer-related, maybe not every year, but certainly.
Correct, but that's, but that's, that's a whole separate inspection, that's a whole separate maintenance versus making sure that there are no violations of deed restrictions happening in the open space.
Right.
And that this would all be written into deeds.
I hear you.
And it seemed to be, seemed to be workable with the example that they, they had. And you had another example where Fish and Game was involved with that too, wasn't it?
Yeah, they come up with the language for the deed restriction.
Right. So, and the applicant said that they would, they would follow up with that from a, a legal standpoint with Fish and Game and have some other examples with HOAs that they've done that with in other communities as well. Let's see. So one of the things that came up, and I know that Mr. Falcone has a, you know, has some disagreements where he's written down. We do have the right to request, doesn't mean that it has to be followed. They do have, uh, wetland scientists that have done the assessments, but we still have questions as to that one area where the road crossing and the road is gonna be raised up 16 feet, exactly the classification of that. It does not meet the classification of a wetland because of one of three factors that is missing, but would just like to have another opinion on that. And that's up to the board whether or not they want to ask for that or not. Of course, we have no, no authority to really ask for that, so suggestion to ask for, for the clarification on that. And, and we, we did, even though, I know that you said, Joe, that we didn't discuss, that we talked about having that reassessed and I think we, the, the comment from Joe during our meeting was that it wasn't, really wasn't necessary. Let's see. In open spaces, there's often, uh, regulations or deed restrictions to the type of motorized vehicles and et cetera that can be used in those areas. So I think most of the homeowners maybe would not want to have ATVs running around in that open space. It's, it degrades the soils very quickly, and since a lot of this open space has very steep slopes in it, there could also be a personal liability and danger to that as well if, if motorized vehicles were allowed in, in this area. So that's why that was our suggestion. To say nothing about degradation of the environment as well as, as threat to wildlife.
Mountain bikes?
I'm sorry?
What about mountain bikes?
I, I think that's up to the HOA. In a lot of our, a lot of the open spaces or a lot of the conservation easements, mountain bikes are allowed. Again, depending upon the time of year that they're used, they can certainly tear up, up as well.
Especially on steep slopes.
Correct.
And that's kind of why I asked about like if they're gonna do any trails or enhancements, because there are some existing trails that certainly might be used.
There's no plan for the Conservation Commission to do any kind of enhancement with trails in there. That, that land would actually be owned by the owners of that property. So the, you know, the town really doesn't have a say that you have to put trails through that. There are existing trails that are, that are used by people around that community now, by neighbors and, you know, would imagine that would probably continue to some extent. And so the, the final, the final thing that we talked about, and we did talk about this at the meeting, that once we got all of the final reports in from Fish and Game and if necessary, another NHB report, we've already had the vernal pool report, just looking at that, we've, we've already said that we don't see that there'll be any issues with that, but that our final, you know, our final recommendations and approval for this would be dependent upon those reports. And I think, I think that kind of sums it, I didn't want to go over every single point that we had on this, so.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for?
I do, I have one, just one question. And I know you touched on it, you called it, is it the Natural Heritage Bureau report?
Correct.
This is Lamprey River Advisory Committee?
No, two different, two different organizations.
Did you get the report from the Lamprey River?
Yes.
What is your feeling on that?
Pretty detailed, uh, that is another thing that the, the Fish and Game, um, as well as the E S will take into account when they make their recommendations back to the applicant and back to this board.
So their final report, though, their final point was, we recommend that no permits be issued for this project.
That's, and that's, that's their recommendation.
Okay, you don't concur with that?
I, I wouldn't say that we necessarily concur with it or don't concur with it. We, we are not a permitting agency, we don't have that kind of authority to make that recommendation. And we did not make that recommendation.
All the reasons they gave, we're all environmental, they're, they're all conservation.
Correct.
Doug, I, I. I read that same letter and that same comments and did some research and they are, they are an advisory committee and they're making recommendations, it doesn't, they're not binding. And they, they may be some opinions in there that are more inclined towards the conservation side of the world than, um, so we don't have to follow their recommendations.
Oh, well, he knows that. Well, they, they are their recommendations and, and they are recommendations based on the preservation of the quality of the habitat around the Lamprey River watershed. So, so their charge is to protect the environment of the Lamprey River watershed, which is also a major drinking water source for many of the communities around Lamprey River. So the more that environment degrades, the more likely that, that river degrades as well. So that's part of their charge as well, and the tributaries that feed into the Lamprey River. They had a lot of very good points.
They do, and I see it, it's, it's, like you said, it's a recommendation, it's not a mandate, but I was kind of interested to hear what you thought of it, that's all.
Well, we, we did think that there were a lot of good points that, that LRAC brought into that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Comment? John, did you have anything for them? No? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, um, I'll open it up for a, the public hearing, it is now eight oh one. Anybody want to speak for or against? Come up and state your name and, um, where you live, please.
Nate Burnett's 205 Raymond Road, I'm in a butter. I'm not really here to speak for or against the project, but I just want to express my appreciation and support for the sort of dynamic, you know, Joe and Scott and the team seems like are do, you know, making efforts to increase the environmental sustainability of the project. A lot of that is, you know, legal compliance, but there's some above and beyond, you know, elements. And obviously, there's a, a balance between, you know, um, you know, what's financially feasible. But I just want to, you know, express appreciation and support for, you know, their efforts, the effort of the planning board and Conservation Commission, you know, to, to sort of move the project in that direction as much as possible. And just wanna, you know, commend, you know, that, that continued conversation and effort.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I want to express support for the three to one.
Thank you. Anybody else? Speaking for or against? All right, I will close the public hearing, it's eight oh three. You guys can come back up.
Doug, I'd just like to, to let you know, and I actually took it tonight, that comment by Lamprey that they like to, they don't think it should be developed, they, they use that a lot. I actually pulled another one out. The only way they can do that is to buy it.
Yeah, you know, it's funny you should say that, because if you look at this document,
Yeah.
that last page,
Yeah.
looked like it's copy paste.
Yeah, it is.
Look at it. I mean, they've, they've used that one quite often.
I took another one, I can show you a new one.
Yeah, they've used that quite a bit.
All right, anybody?
Uh, one thing that they mentioned here, uh, says additional, the Conservation does not agree with the development team where the area, the road height of 16 feet is not wetlands. We were just talking about that, and they recommend independent licensed wetland scientists to be hired.
Oh, I, I want to respond to that.
I'm only questioning, you willing to pay for it?
No, of course I don't want to pay for it, I already had a, a licensed person. But I want to go s, one step further, so the Conservation Commission hears this. In the late 1990s, this wetland was already looked at, approved by the town, and a crossing was put in, in the same exact spot, and it was a larger project going through that area. This crossing has already been reviewed once. And I've been to a site walk, this is my fourth hearing here, and two, uh, productive meetings with the Conservation Commission. And to ask me to do that now is not fear. If you had asked me to do it earlier, it would be different. But you already reviewed this project, not even for me, for someone else, and approved it.
I don't think you can hold us accountable for what happened in 1990s.
No, I know, I know, but it's, 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 it's recorded, it's history, it's to this day.
But the environment is constantly changing, these species.
Our understanding of how to protect these species has come a long way in the last 25 years.
Yes.
Especially since a lot more has been developed up and there are a lot fewer of these animals around. Now it's even more important that we are able to protect them in some way.
So I hear what you're saying about your frustration for something that was approved in the 1990s, but this is.
Just, just a point, that's.
A lot of years later and a lot has changed. But anyway, all right, folks, um, it, we've had him do the update, we've heard from the Conservation Commission, we've said repeatedly that we will not be giving a decision tonight. So we do obviously need to, um, put forward a motion to, uh, to continue this case, um, to a date certain, have you got, Mr. Falcone?
Well, I, I think I agree, uh, with, uh, um, the commission brought up. And we gotta wait for these other agencies to come in.
Right.
And of course, I follow the clock and, and, uh, I know when they're mandated, they have to respond or not. And I, uh, think we'll have all, everything straightened out by the, by the end of May. So there's no use of me asking you to continue for me in the month of May.
Okay.
I think your, your early hearing in June, uh, is it the 12th?
12th, yeah.
Yeah, June 12th.
All right, and I would have met with the commission again to, to, uh, discuss with them what comes back from the state agencies.
Okay, and don't forget that the deliverables would be a, a good 10 days or so prior so that we can get them within a week of the meeting, right?
Okay.
Okay.
And the only other question I have to ask the commission for their final opinion or recommendation to you is, you meet on the 12th, right?
Correct.
I, I am uncertain if they meet on the 10th.
We get the second Monday of the month, we want the 10th, so again, that means that it's a quick turnaround. Any comments that we have, this board will then not have enough time to read those comments, just like they didn't have enough time to read them today.
Right.
Not all of us did.
Well, you read it while you were here, John, while we were all talking at the beginning of the meeting.
I read them at home, but I'm, you know. It was written.
Not, not everybody has that opportunity if you've got a busy Wednesday.
So then it's a suggestion to move it to the 26th so that there's adequate time to go to the ConCon?
So the other possibility is, and that would have to be decided upon, upon Con, is if we held a special meeting up a week prior, which is what we did this time, because our normal meeting date is next Monday.
Okay, if you guys could do that, that would be great for us, so that we could have your comments ahead of time. Is it, it's really, for those of us who are busy, those of us who are running a meeting, who are running a meeting can't read the minutes when you get here. And I was here a half hour early. So if you could, that would be great, because it's.
We can poll the members and see if we can meet early.
Would that work for you?
Would that, so the 12th works for you, Mr. Falcone?
Yes.
All right, you, Scott?
Yep, in the worst case scenario, we can certainly just ask for a continuance to the next meeting, so.
All right, yes, so you think, if you don't hear back and it's, um, we've got, it's, what, D E S? I'm trying to think of all of the groups you said.
Fish and Game.
The vernal pool report.
Natural Heritage Bureau, if Fish and Game requires an additional.
Yep.
NHB pool report. So there's one, two, three, four, four different agencies.
Engineering review.
Engineering review.
The, uh, new plan.
The only thing he's gonna review is the three to one slope.
Okay.
Well, he's got a whole letter.
All right, um, so I will entertain a motion to continue, just pending the reports. Any minute?
I second that motion?
I'm not making it.
Oh, you're not making it? I thought I heard you say you're, you're.
Entertaining.
I will make a motion to continue the, uh, case of, uh, 24 dash zero zero one, uh, L L A and 24 dash zero zero two, Sub-Falcone Raymond Road, um, until the June 12th, 2024 meeting.
At seven o'clock.
What's that?
At seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock, yes.
At Town Hall, if you really want to get it all in. At Town Hall.
At Town Hall, okay, on June 12th, 2024.
At Town Hall, okay. On June twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at seven o'clock PM at Town Hall. Don't show up in the morning.
Conference Room One.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Well, Buzz already did.
Got it, good, alright.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded that we continue case two four zero zero one, LLA, and two four zero zero two, Sub, to June twelfth, twenty, excuse me, June twelfth of twenty twenty-four, at seven PM at the Town Hall. And it's pending your, all of your reports, and with the deliverables.
I think you have to vote on that motion.
I know.
Okay, sorry.
I know.
Just a reminder.
That's okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I know how to run a meeting. I've done them for years. Anybody? Alright.
Do we need to-
Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by saying aye. And any opposed, okay, so it is seven zero zero. We'll see you in June.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, the next thing on our agenda is discussion of Planning Board fees. Ed has requested that we hold off on this until the next meeting. He said that he- We are still holding a meeting. Could you please have discussions out in the hall? He said he's not had a chance to review this, but would hopes to have a, a update for us, like something of a draft for our next meeting. Okay?
I can pass them around at the end of the meeting, and so you got to take them with you tonight.
Sure.
But basically, Ed Jen, who is my manager, the director of the organization, met to discuss the town's overall, you know, budget reductions, and then what that would do to our, SRPC's contract. And then how it could be separated out into some of the, you know, softer work that I do, which is like some administrative stuff, and then, you know, ordinance creation, things like that. And then the sort of harder technical review, which is like stuff like for projects like this. So that you could bill that back to the developer, or applicant, I guess we could say. And then the other part of funds go towards the other stuff. So Jen, based on that discussion, put something together, sent it to Ed, but just got there today. Ed's email saying he was going to be sick tonight, and Jen's emailed to him, you know, crossed in cyberspace. So Ed had asked Theresa. But I did, I had already had it printed out from Jen, so I can share it with you. I'd rather just give it to you tonight, so I don't have to forget it next time.
So you don't have to forget it?
Yeah, because that's what will happen. But yeah, that's essentially what we're talking about, is kind of creating two buckets for your contract. One would be to pay SRPC to do some of the review of like, regulatory review, and different things like that, and then the, you know, how to do the chargeback. And then so in addition to showing a new contract with SRPC, she also created a new fee, she added it into your existing fee schedule, so you could see how that would look. That's what I'm trying to get to, is so there's two documents. It's like the new SRPC contract, and how that would look, and then your new fee schedule, and how that would look.
Okay.
So that's the basic gist.
Okay, and that is because we, our contract with y'all expires on the seventh, right? I mean, not the seventh, but this, in July.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yes, yes. It's, I think you have like another month and a half or something. And so you would need to have a new contract, but with your new budget, you know, you can't meet the old contract, so how can we, what's a way to look at slicing this up a little bit?
Okay.
So obviously, there's a lot of other moving parts. I don't know your budget in terms of like what you can afford, but this is, I think this is what Jen's attempt at meeting the feedback she got from Ed.
Okay.
Can we consider things like, you know, a bake sale? You know, sell books or something, we got to raise some money.
Some plats.
We need, yeah, plats, we need this contract.
Oh, and I'll bring it for next time. I actually don't have enough copies, but she did-
I have my own. I printed it.
She did include fee schedules from other communities to give you-
Ed Benton, he was going to research that and compile that, so if you did, thank you or something.
For to look at, and at least one of them, I know Wakefield, we do the same thing here with, and they do the same thing as what we're proposing here, which is the chargeback to the builder, you know, the applicant. So we have some familiar with it, familiarity with it on our end. It's a little extra lift because of just how I have to separate out my time if I'm the one still doing it, or whoever it might be, but, and then there's a little bit more on your end, because you're going to have to manage the escrow account and stuff. But these are all things, I think, if this is the route you wanted to go, we could figure out.
It's workable.
Yeah.
So Blair, you mentioned like regulatory review. Is that, you know, on an ongoing basis for these cases? Like I see-
No, 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 it's not for the cases. It's like the last meeting, we had a whole conversation about regulations, and what do we want to do, so that piece. So if you guys said, okay, of the ten things we discussed, this is the one we want to do. You know, Blair, can you help us out with that? Can you do a little research? Can you draft, you know, some draft language or something like that?
Check, okay.
Things like that.
And it's, that's super helpful.
So, yeah. So that's the stuff that's not like time-dependent, it's not, you know, that's why I say softer. It's just, it's not as, it has to be done.
You say you're going to separate like time for a case, or build towards a case. What, are you reviewing our ordinances and regulations relative to the proposal?
Yeah, 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 yes.
Because I do see that the town engineer consultant does that, but they seem to put a lot of stuff in there as questions. Like, you know, well, you know, how does the board feel about this idea? Or we see this, what is the board's interpretation? And then, but certain applications might, actually, I can't talk about anyone's, but it's possible that they take those engineer comments and as comments and not our decision, so.
Well, they get our decision when we make our motions anyway, but thank you very much for that, Ken.
Your email, what?
I was just going to ask, can you send that to Alana to send out to the members?
I think it's already been sent to Alana, but I'll make sure of it.
Okay, because I know, I just got it today.
Yep. Do you want the paper copies then?
I do.
Okay.
I don't know how many you have, but like I said, I printed mine.
I have enough. I have eight of the contract and the new fee schedule.
Okay.
And the fee schedules track changes, so you can see how it's different.
Alright.
Blair, how are we all doing compared to other towns?
I have no chance to look at it.
Great.
You want to pass them down?
Oh, is that what we're doing? Yeah, no, no, okay, let's go.
Pass that over to Buzz, please. While you're passing those around, the other thing on this agenda is public comment, and we have no public here. They all left, so no matter about that.
Do we still have to open and close?
You got a whole comment period, or if there's nobody here?
Nobody here, yeah, no.
It's not, wasn't sure if that was a procedural thing that's just required no matter what? Somebody comes running through the door or something?
A other thing she, Alana put in was the minutes from April twenty-fourth. Did anyone have a chance to look at those?
I did.
Any?
I have no changes.
Did the secretary look at them?
I did not. I spent an infinite amount of time looking through the whole file for this other case, and never got to that.
So why don't we hold off?
Can we put this until the next meeting? Yeah, I don't, I don't feel like I've looked at this either.
Alright, so we will postpone the approval of minutes to the next meeting.
Do we need to make a motion for that, or is that just a, well, I guess approving the minutes is a motion, so we'll just do that at the next meeting?
Is there requirements that if people, if we don't post those in a certain time period, that it's-
They're posted as unofficial minutes, and the audio video is available for anyone who would like it, so we meet the letter of the law with that.
Okay.
It's what, two days or something, forty-eight hours?
Five. It's five days.
It's five days, unless it's a DRI, then I think you have like, maybe like two days to get it to the, just to get them, to let them know. And you have to give them like the most rawest of minutes that you have.
So we do a pretty good job then, because we get the, the minutes are usually up in a day or two after, right?
I honestly don't know. Sometimes they're, well, the audio part and the rough minutes are usually available, right?
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty quick, but.
I guess the audio part's been a little iffy the first part of this year.
Thanks, Tim, got that upset.
Back on track.
Yay.
Alright, staff board updates. Anybody? Buzz? Skip?
We got this thing from the town of Raymond about Byron Woods.
Yes. It didn't get on the agenda for some reason, you're right.
I don't know that there's any reason for discussion, but it wasn't obvious to me that it's even close here to us. And I don't think there's anybody in that particular volume of things is going to affect this town in any way, shape, or form.
Yeah, they came to us, was it last year, John?
Raymond?
Yeah.
You mean, you have a letter from Raymond?
Yeah, with their-
About their huge-
Development, yeah.
Yeah, but again, the reason why we're being contacted is because we're the neighboring town.
Right.
Right, but it's not close to us, it's-
It's because it's such a big development that it could impact, you know, the traffic on our roads, or the need for what, our fire services to join other-
Right, if you have anything that's regional impact, you send it out.
Once it reaches a certain size.
Well, again, that's the key word, the key word, the key word is regional.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So again, they're five hundred apartment building, whatever they're putting on the wayside, whatever.
Hundred and something duplexes.
You know, I mean, that's not even, that's close to the next town over, but, you know.
Well, I'm sure they got notified as well.
Oh, I'm sure everybody.
But because we are in a budding town, we get notified.
We've done things just because, you know, this development here, regional impact, because we're going into Raymond, where Raymond, where one fifty-six and twenty-seven is.
We are on the border.
Well, it's in a budding town. So. But this is on the other side of one oh one.
Right.
Yeah, it's not even close. Thank you for the letter. Appreciate it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So do we need to reciprocate, send something to Raymond that says we're good?
No.
No?
They're doing their contractual duty to send it out to us. Whether we respond or not, we could. I mean, it's polite. They sent us something. So it is polite to write Swan back. Thank you for the heads up and the notice.
We see no issues with this.
Yeah.
Is that what you guys would like Alana to do? So I'd need a motion.
Well, I mean, I think that's just common practice unless we actually felt we had to discuss or do something. To like say, hey, we have recommendations, then we'd actually have a formal thing where I said, this is what we recommend, and we don't, we just basically usually write back saying, thanks for the heads up, and
Okay.
I don't think there's a vote needed. I mean, if you want to vote, you can have a vote.
If we're going to ask Alana to do something, I'd like a motion for it.
Might be nice to send them a notice as we reviewed. Who was the letter addressed to?
Thank you, Leonard?
All of us.
Was it addressed to the, what was it, addressed to the planning board? Of the day?
Apparently it was addressed to Alana, I'm assuming by email.
Alright.
Came to us.
It's something that would be distributed to us.
She can reply.
Okay, so Alana, please reply to the regional impact letter from Raymond. Let them know we've discussed it.
I will make a motion that we ask Alana to respond to the-
In kind.
Raymond impact that we have discussed and felt that there was no regional impact to the town.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded that we have Alana respond to Raymond's letter of regional impact on their case. Any discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay. Is that all you have? Skip, did you want to bring up any trainings or anything?
Uh, yes.
Yes. Saturday. He wants to bring up Saturday, don't you?
No, well, I looked at it, but no. It's online though, right?
It is.
Okay, alright, because I couldn't find a location, and it said online.
It was on Concord. For a longest time, it's online. Now I signed up for it. So I'm glued to a computer on that lovely Saturday afternoon in May.
I'm good.
Okay, so you're all set?
I'll do it.
Alright, Chris, anything?
No, I'm on the, that meeting too, and I've been studying our stuff and trying to get fully up to speed. There's a lot here.
I know. It doesn't, it doesn't all get learned in a day, does it?
No. Sometimes it takes hammers.
John, anything on the BOS side of the world?
Got the playground set all there.
Yeah, good.
Mars project, Mars became playable over there.
They're playing games.
They're playing games, and they had a great turnout this weekend, and it was softball and for baseball, and they-
Did I hear that those still aren't regulation-sized deals?
I don't know anything about legal league baseball, so you got me.
Okay. Because that was what we were, had been told it was going to be.
There's talk, we're actually making a frisbee golf thing up.
Disc golf?
Disc golf, it's okay. Frisbee, disc golf.
Frisbee golf.
Hopefully it turns out to be a nice thing. The majority of the meeting was reading emails about public comments and everything, so if you want to go into any details about that, watch the video, because it's too long for me to bother explaining, or even bother wanting to go through. We had our regular household stuff that we had to take care of. But it wasn't that, there was nothing that was brought up that, I don't think that changed the world in any way, so.
No. World is still spinning in the right direction, okay.
It is still spinning in the right directions.
Did, did you guys, there was a lot merger thing that you guys needed to do something, sign off or do something?
Yeah, it's all done.
Yeah, they did that. Oh.
Yeah. Oh, I did that, okay. That's just household, regular stuff.
I don't know what that, how that goes.
Yeah, we just went and signed, looked it over, checked it, and we voted to approve the thing, so the board voted on it, yes, and I signed off on it.
Okay.
Alright, Ed?
Nothing from you?
Nope, I'm good.
I will be doing the Hard Road to Travel workshop tomorrow morning, like first half of the day, doing the online version, so I will maybe have some things to bring back to the board at the next meeting.
Oh, good.
Based on that. And the Saturday one, I'm going to try to attend, but it's going to be a, we'll see. I'll do my best to attend that one too. Definitely the hard road to travel, but we'll see about the Saturdays as well.
What is that one, Drew? I know what it is, but when is that?
It's tomorrow from nine AM to one thirty PM, something like that. It's both, it's a hybrid, you know, online and Concord, sorry, in-person and Concord or online on the general web.
That's, that's actually probably a really good thing for us if we can hit that, because I have the book. In fact, I have it right here, my case, and I read, I've read it like five times, and it still makes my brain spin and try to figure out roads and how they got to be a road, and-
I don't have the actual book, but I did, you know, find online copies when the emergency lane stuff was going on in town, because I live on an, still on an emergency lane, not on one of the ones that was voted in.
Yeah.
And so I was trying to, I didn't have the house for that long before all the stuff came up, and what the heck is an emergency lane, and so I had a little bit of a reading to do, but.
Yeah, that, that was a lot of interesting stuff. Selectmen, if you guys want to. You have a conundrum here in this town, that you will. There is, there is.
The guy that wrote that book used to teach-
He's trying to poke a bear, isn't he?
Yeah, right, right. Seems like it's-
The same as the book.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a road, we can talk about that too. There is a road conundrum that's going on in this town. There was a Warren article that was passed that was so vague that made the issue a little more difficult to interpret. But as, I don't know if it's messed up, it's just different ways of interpreting how that's supposed to be read, due to the vagueness of it.
Remember the discussion that Pete Landry and I were having? It's the same deal.
Yeah.
Same deal.
Right, Doug, anything else, Doug?
Nope, I'm all set. I started to read the same book, and it's like reading a dictionary.
Which is sleep, though, huh?
I will be doing the hard road to travel as well, but I'll be doing it virtually, so we'll see you there, but, oh, you're doing it, okay, yeah. I'm looking forward to that one, because that, this whole roads thing, I've only worked in urban areas where roads are already built. So this whole rural road thing is a new thing to me, so I, I mean, I've picked up a lot since I've been here, but yeah, I'm looking forward to this one. Beyond that-
to this one. Beyond that, the New Hampshire Planners Association will be doing their annual meeting in June in, in Keene. It's a professional meeting, but I do believe it's open to board members, if you are interested, so keep an eye out for it. Kyle in our office was the organizer of it, so he's making us push it heavily to get good attendance and stuff, but the New Hampshire Planners Association is kind of the little statewide, you know, localish version of what's called NCCAPA, which is the Northern New England Planners Association, which is Vermont, Maine, and New Hampshire. So, you know, that's, that's like our professional organization, and then the APA, the American Association, American Planners Association is, is our sort of mothership organization based out of DC and stuff, so. Yeah, the New England, the New Hampshire Planners Association Annual Meeting will be in, in June, keep your eye out for that.
All right, one last note, and again, I'm not picking on anybody here, but it's just happening all over, I've stated before at different meetings, but anytime we're addressing a member, or a board, or somebody here is in front of us, and this is for budget, this is for, this is for board of selectmen, your opinion should be stressed as your opinion, and not as we, because we're all individuals, and we all have our own vote at the end of the day. So it doesn't matter even when it comes to, and I joke to you about reading the minutes, and I whatever, or reading the things here, you know, it's I didn't have the choice, no, we didn't have the choice to read. And just to be clear, so that everybody is individualized on our own opinions, and that we're not grouped together.
Oh, because I said we didn't have a chance to read them all?
And again
Well, I was referring to the we's that have said it in the thing.
But that's not even, broadly over the town, we have a lot of statements that come out, and people are using the terms as we, as a group, and it's not, it's an individual statement.
So I should speak for self like I was taught years ago?
Absolutely, again, it's just for clarification, so even again, not, not picking on what you have, you have good comments, and I appreciate what everything you said tonight, I really do, it was very informative, great, but what you were saying was directed as your opinion to him on what you think, not on what we think. Just, and that should just be stated, that when we're talking. And again, every question is great, ask as many as you want, for whatever reason you want to ask, and you go right ahead, but just make sure that the questions you're asking are directed as yourself, and not as we as a board.
So we have to remember to add those three words.
Well, it's
In my opinion.
In my opinion, or it's just my clarification, just, just so that the applicant knows, because like he said, he's, when I did 3% or whatever, the 1% I don't recall that as being the board telling him to do it. We didn't say as a board, you need to come back as 3.
No.
That never came up, it was part of the discussion, and that was his problem that he did it, not ours, you know, but again, it's just to be clear.
I was surprised to see that, and that
I was too, but
John, I take your point, though, it's, I, I will be more careful with how I present my opinion.
No, again, just because I like to agree with you.
No, it is, no, I agree.
And you're gonna hear me speak up and say, listen, I don't agree enough, and then that doesn't sound good, when I'm sitting here publicly disagreeing with you, and I don't
Just more used to saying a we in general, but in a setting like this, totally valid, and I, I should do that, I agree.
We as a board here, and again, we're talking, you know, as we disagree, we shouldn't be bickering back and forth, it doesn't make us look any good, is it me and you start arguing about something?
Yeah.
You know, it's your opinion, then when we come all together and we're finalizing the plans, and we talk as a group, that's when we, we can discuss back and forth.
Makes sense, yeah.
About, no, I don't think what you're right, I don't think, and we had that part of the discussion then, just not with the applicant.
Well, it makes sense.
It is, I think it's good that we have different perspectives that
I never said we didn't.
we can all bring to the table here, and
Never said we didn't.
and different opinions, and, you know, what might be more important to, you know, one person might be not as important to another, and so, you know, it's different observations.
Well, Chris, we all have
I absolutely agree with, that's what I said, speak your mind, speak whatever you want, but make sure that you're speaking to the applicant, and you're not mentioning that as we are a group
Yeah.
asking the applicant something where we haven't voted on anything, we haven't had our, at every, you'll know, when we get longer in, you'll see that when we come to the end, we're gonna have our, okay, we closed public comment, we closed this, and then it's just us talking as a board, that's when you start hammering out different details, we just
And even then, is I have a problem with this, and anybody else have a problem with this?
Okay, right, it's just, it's just a way to clarify, and again, and again, it's just something that's been happening, where I sat on Budget Committee this year, you know, and you saw that happening, where people were complaining about this, and they're saying, you know, everybody, and it's like, really, it's not everybody, it's your opinion that it's everybody, but it's really not everybody, you know, and it's just to get
Well, at the beginning of the meeting, I, I brought up the road agent and the driveway approvals, because as I read our regulations, I'm seeing that, you know, they need to put stuff on the plan that shows the driveways that are approvable, and, and if we don't have somebody, third party, looking at that and reviewing that, then, you know, we, how do we know these driveways are approvable, or buildable, or viable, or have site distance, or positive grades and all this stuff, so it's in our regulations, so I, I, I found a lot of things in our regulations that raised questions. One said, all roads shall be 24 feet, and this is a 22-foot road, and if they have curbs, they're gonna be two feet wider, which is increased by two feet to be 26, and I, seems like this is a 22-foot road, and it's not 24 feet, so I don't recall how that got to be there. Maybe it was voted or discussed at a prior meeting, maybe there's some other exception here, but I'm reading the regulations, I'm charged with trying to understand these.
Absolutely.
We have no opportunity to discuss these different ideas.
We do.
We can't talk to, huh?
We do, and are here.
Hopefully we are now.
No, but I'm just saying, during the meeting, you do have an opportunity to discuss, we can't discuss specifics to a case without the applicant here, that's just not allowed. So even your comment
But any questions that you have, like if you have questions on the driveway
All right.
Bing it, right here.
So my question is not regarding this case, it's regarding our regulations. Our regulations say the belt shall have a 24-foot driveway or road, period. How, what, what are the methods to make it a 22-foot road or narrower than that?
Waiver. You would make, you would make a waiver request.
And was a waiver
I mean, this one's been a long while, I'd have to go back and look.
Yeah, I would too.
And again, we can't
I know we voted on waivers, we voted on waivers months ago. There were some initial requests prior to the slope one that we did vote on, that may have been one of them, I don't recall.
I did go through everything on, post on, Alana's great, she posts everything on the website, or a lot of stuff on there, which is great, and when you look at other towns, they don't do that, and
Oh, wow.
Oh, it's horrible, other towns, I went to a meeting at another town
A vital job, actually.
I went to a meeting at another town recently, and I will give everybody here absolute thumbs up on professionalism and what we're doing compared to this other town. Wow, I don't wanna say which town or whatever, but it just made me scratch my head, I was kind of embarrassed to be watching this particular board, it was embarrassing.
Maybe you could
If you go through the minutes of when this was on the agenda, it'll be in the agenda, there's no notice of decision for waivers. Waivers, waivers aren't posted as a separate document, they would be, they would be indicated in the minutes, that's where you'd have to find them.
Oh, okay, thank, and I, I will do that, and I think there was a meeting where this, before me, what had been, had come up.
Yeah, there was a couple, I think there was at least a couple meetings before you guys were all sworn in and seated.
Before, right, okay, so that, that's, thank you, that's a great point, I will do that, because I was trying to discover, this is what I'm reading, and this is what I'm seeing, and what's, why
You might even give Alana a chance, I think, isn't she at a, I think she's at a training or something today, but give her a day or two, and then ask her if she remembers when the waiver requests came in, because she might remember what those
Yeah, I mean, you can look at the initial application document too, that would have any waiver requests.
Yeah.
But it's possible that they added ones, like I said, like the slope one, it came up, I think along the way.
Yeah.
Right, so, so, that, that happens.
And, and somebody talking about the specific meeting, but somebody brought up curbing, and the guidelines, our regulations say granted curbing, and so their, their slope Cape Cod curbs or something, so I assume also that that was on a waiver somewhere, but I, I do not see that.
That was brought up again tonight too, and let's not keep getting back into this case, you're gonna get us into trouble.
Yeah, let's put it, let's put a pin in that one for, for now, and you guys can hook into that.
But in the subdivision, it may have something less in regards to open space.
All right, anything else? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Are we ready to land this plane?
Yes.
Gentlemen?
Will we make a motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a motion to adjourn and a second, are there any, is there any further discussion?
No discussion on the motion to adjourn.
I think we should
Roberts rules.
Yes, there's been a motion and a second.
Yeah, but there's no discussion on the motion to adjourn.
I think we should discuss
You have a question, Buzz? I'm just, I'm just being, I'm just being a stinker, I'm just being a stinker.
Just a point of order, you didn't ask for public
It's my favorite rule in Roberts rules.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to hear Buzz, what did you say?
You didn't ask for public comments.
I did, I said we didn't have any public, thank you.
She did.
Wow, you guys are like, do you don't do this to Ed?
I, I made a note, as a secretary, I documented and noted that she did say we have
All those in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then go shut that off.
Yes.